Pretty good, aren't you?
Pretty good.
I bring that.
Come on, right?
Yes, come on.
Oh, you're...
He just goes on.
Oh, you're...
Oh, you're...
Can I just go on?
If I provide, you know, that...
Oh, you're...
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 Um, it's a...
Good to go, sir.
Good, you all right?
I'm ready.
Come on, sir.
Come on, right?
Yes, come on.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you're...
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 That's it, well, I'll see you.
Oh, you should make a point.
We've had enough of the show.
Sorry, I'm gonna stay like...
You might think more than you do.
Yeah, I thought we were fast, huh?
I'm counting down.
I can't count.
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 She can't count.
So, we see...
Oh, you're...
Oh, you're...
Oh, you're...
Oh, you're...
Oh, you're...
That very side, you have really nice...
Well, I need to...
I need to...
I need to...
I need to...
So, so...
You're waiting for me to tell you that.
I'm very happy that I'm in great role, Kelly.
And, but not...
Oh, my God.
I like to be...
I give myself...
I give myself...
All right.
I can't...
Oh, very long.
Yeah, it's too...
Oh, very long.
Oh, very long.
Oh, very long.
Well, um, because...
It can even make some...
Right, it's not for anything, but it can shock you.
But it's...
They...
Oh.
It's next to me.
Oh, me.
It's next to me.
Oh, I know.
Oh, I know.
Well, um, it is...
It can even make some...
Right, it's not for anything, but it can shock you.
But it's...
They...
Oh.
Oh, no.
Oh.
It's next to me.
Oh, me.
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 Oh, I'm...
Oh, I'm...
Oh, no.
Oh.
It's next to me.
Oh, me.
It's next to me.
Oh, me.
It's next to me.
Oh, me.
Oh, I'm...
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 They had one copy and I had one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Will I have a call order?
That's crazy.
We can all rise. Go out and pray, and then, uh, whoever you suggest.
Josh Toppin.
Yes, sir. He'll come to the mic, and he'll open us in word prayer.
Okay. I wanna read a couple verses, too, if that's okay. Uh, this was Easter season, and, uh, everybody's attention seems to be on Christ right now. I believe you can do it to read Philippians, chapter two, uh, Psalm, verse five, it says, "Let this mind be in you," which is also in Christ Jesus, which that verse is telling us, "Let's be like Christ." I mean, that's the goal of every Christian, and really, everybody in the world should try their best to be just like Christ. Everything we say, everything we do, we should be like Christ, and what was he like? Uh, he was humble. It says, "Who being in form of God, thought as not robbery, be equal as God, but made himself of no reputation, took it on himself as form of servant, was made the likeness of man. And being found in fashion as man, he humbled himself, and became obedient unto death, even the death of the cross. Wherefore God also hath highly exalted him, and given him a name, which is above every name. That at the name of Jesus every knee should bow, of things of heaven, and things of earth, and things unto the earth; and that every tongue should confess that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father." Jesus was humble himself to become a servant, to serve, and then to die, and be buried, and be risen again. Uh, so let's pray together, we'll pray to him, let's pray. Father, I thank you for the opportunity to praise this council meeting, and, uh, it's a privilege, it's an honor. And I say that because I love this town with all my heart. Born and raised here, I mean, I live here now, but my heart still remains in this town, where my family's from, or my heritage is, and like, it's my heart's desire to see this town thrive. When I say thrive, I don't even mean that the businesses would do well, the people would be well, that it would be a town of people that looked to Christ and behaved like Christ. It would be a Christ honoring town. And I believe if those things were in line, where people are honoring Christ, then everything else will fall into line. So, but I pray, as this council meeting comes together tonight, that around this room, the people in the crowd, the people in the council, and I thank you for the council members, uh, they humble themselves, and they've become servants of this community, and, uh, I believe that they are called by you, and placed in the position that they're in by you, and they will answer to you for every single decision and word that they say. So, but I pray that they would, the council members, the mayor, the vice mayor, all of them, would behave in a way that would honor Christ, the people in the audience here tonight, that they would behave in a way that would honor Christ, that they would make decisions that would honor Christ, that everything they do, they would do in the fear of God, that they would look to you, and submit to you, and honor you. So, but I pray that you've helped them in this, and I know that, if they do, and they make the God honoring, Christ exalting decisions, that everything else will fall into place. And, uh, I do pray that this town will thrive. I grew up in this town when it was thriving, when you would drive through town, there were people everywhere, shops open everywhere, the churches were full, uh, it was a great time to grow up in this town, and, uh, I desire to see it back there again. So, but I pray you'd help this council to do their very best, to bring this town to a place of honoring Christ again. And again, thank you for letting me pray over this meeting, thank you for the great men and women that are in this town, but thank you most of all for Christ Jesus, who came into this world, became a servant, went to the cross, and died in, in, in the most shameful way that anyone could ever die, and he didn't die because of his own sin, he died for our sin. And, uh, I'm thankful that he went through the grave, and that we're gonna celebrate him this week, that he didn't stay in the grave, but he arose on the third day, and he's highly exalted now, and that every one of us should confess that Jesus Christ is Lord, to the glory of God the Father. And, uh, we again, thank you for this opportunity, and we ask and pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Will you pledge allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Can we please have a roll call of the council?
Paul Horn.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Melons.
Here.
Powers.
Here. Thank you. We move to the consent calendar, and as we look at the first part of that, the approval of the agenda, I was consulting with the attorney on, uh, with the agenda, and he thought it would be appropriate to, and I thought it would be appropriate, after consulting with him, to add discussion of the acquisition of real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect negotiating, uh, strategy of the town. I would propose that we add that to the agenda.
So, you're proposing a closed...
A closed session, in that section, code section two point two, dash three seven, one one, A, three. So, if someone wants to... I would propose we add that, let's see.
So, move.
We could add that before other business?
Um, there's some changes I would like to make.
Okay. Well, let's... So, how do we, do we vote on all of them at once, or do we just vote on...
Second.
How do we make it number twenty four point five, code section, that way, that way that's a really important... Okay. Do we have a second to that, um, just to add this, add that to the agenda? Second half? Okay, we have a second? Um, can we have a roll call of the vote, that, please?
Paul Horn.
Yes.
Paul.
Let me see that question again.
I would like to add discussion of the acquisition of real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating strategy of the town, and so that we can go into closed session.
I don't want a closed session.
You don't want a closed session, okay?
No.
We vote no?
No.
Okay, we have no.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay. Can we, um, would anyone else like to add, or discuss the agenda for approval?
Hmm, yeah, I would like to remove public comment from the consent calendar, and discuss that before we proceed.
Remove public comment from the consent calendar?
Mm-hmm, audience comments, uh, number five, and...
So, you'd like to remove...
Number twenty four.
Okay.
So, we like to remove both public comments? To discuss, before we move forward, we put the consent calendar.
Okay.
And, on twenty two, um, like the CH goals, A, well-known people, B, and limited access, C, and I think all of these need to be resolutions.
So, what do you have?
I have the CH goals, basketball.
That's number twenty two, right?
Twenty two, right.
Okay.
Well-known people is twenty two B, and C is limited access.
And you'd like to move public comment before, as number...
Remove it to discussion.
Remove it to discussion of the agenda. Okay.
So, what does that do? Uh, we discuss what I would like to see happen with that, and make a decision. I don't think there's any, uh, I don't think there's any objection to twenty two, A, B, and C, so that any objection, I think we can change the agenda, unless we have...
Without objection, we have added twenty two, A, B, and C to the agenda, okay?
And then we need to... Move public comment off for discussion. I'm not in favor of that.
So, that means, you, that would mean, would the people be able to come up before the agenda?
No.
Or it'd be removing the people from talking, to addressing the council?
No, we discuss it before any comment, public comments happen.
Okay, so we discuss the...
Audience comments, number five.
Okay.
And number twenty four. So, you wanna leave them on the agenda, public comment? I'm saying we'll move them off of the consent calendar, and we discuss those.
Well, they're not on the consent calendar, per se, they're on the agenda.
Okay, then I'll remove them from the, the agenda until it's discussed as to where that will be.
Well, I disagree.
Sir, are you asking that you...
I'm making the motion that public comments be moved off of the consent calendar for the approval of the agenda, so that it can be discussed. Why does it need to be discussed? We don't need two public comments. Let's be honest, we don't need two. My time is just as valuable as your time. I spend plenty of it here. I think that people can ask us to do something in the first one, react to what we've done in the second one. I disagree with you. I'm making the motion to remove one of the public comments, you pick which one. Well, I'm not gonna vote for it, 'cause I don't think either one would be... You don't have to vote for it, I've made a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second to that motion?
A second.
Can we have a second? All in favor?
No, we don't have a discussion on motion.
Okay.
I don't understand why council member Kennedy wants to take away an opportunity for this community to comment on what the town council has done in the meeting. And I think having a public comment again, a public comment at the end, lets people tell us what we should do, and then lets people reflect on what we have done. I think this is the people's council, and it's just a limitation of the speech of the community. So, I'm against, I'm against taking a public comment off of the agenda.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Okay, I have to, I haven't gotten a, um, agenda for two times.
Okay.
And it's always sent to the wrong address, so...
Okay.
We need to correct that, because I didn't get one this time till I walked in here, and it was in the packet.
Okay.
And then last time, I didn't get one, so...
We can get together and discuss the email address.
That's fine, 'cause I'm getting it, I'm getting it from everybody else, but I'm not getting...
Right, okay.
The agenda.
Okay, well, we will, we'll try to remedy that.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion on the motion at hand?
I agree with Paul Horn. The town of Penn people need to know everything that's going on here. And all the way we can do it, if they're here, everybody's gonna say what we brought up and that, and I'm sure, and I'm sure what Paul Horn thought. There's nothing, and then we're moving public comment, that means people aren't know what's going on. Well, let people, let people speak. And I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you, but you, you go ahead. I was still speaking when you interrupted. No, sir, you weren't. I may be catching my breath. Go ahead, you can continue. No, you go ahead. It's fine, that doesn't preclude people from knowing what's going on, just because they can't comment at the first thing. Well, they need to. They can, I mean, it's, it's up for discussion, okay? Well, let them speak, let them speak their mind. One or the other, one or the other.
I don't care where those...
I mean, they don't know anything when they're beginning, why can't you wait until the end? Because all this time, I mean, we've spent a lot of time, and it gets on... We're wasting time, ain't we? All the time. So, it all comes down to council member... They waste time getting up, calling, too. It all comes down to council member Powers, whether or not he wants to let the people speak once, or say, let the people speak twice. Well, calls for a vote. That's what it comes down to.
I've got questions at this point.
Okay, well, can we have a roll call vote for that motion, please?
First, Paul. Paul Horn.
Oh.
No.
Paul.
No.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
Let's comment.
Could I have that question read?
The only thing you're voting on now, Lyndon, is whether to stop the discussion and make a vote on the motion.
Oh.
We're voting on a motion. That's why I asked for the clarification. What am I voting on?
Do we need a revote?
Yeah, revote.
So, revote, we'll call it on...
So, we have to vote, call the question first?
I don't think there'd be an objection if you called the question about that.
Okay.
Just to end the session.
So, okay, this is, we're gonna have a revote to call the question, um, that was an error on my part, but we will go around again, and call the question on whether to vote on the motion for removing... But, what is that relation to?
Could, could we clarify, too, I think we're ready to move forward with the vote on the motion, but we need to clarify whether that is removing number twenty four, or that is removing number five?
I think with removing number five.
Okay, so if that is, that is the motion that's gonna be voted on now, is the removal of number five from the agenda, the audience comments?
Well, now that it's clarified, you know, those people may not wanna sit through the entire meeting, or come and address council, they will not, uh, they will be disenfranchised, they will not allow, be allowed to give their voice, by removing the first public comment.
I'm happy to amend that, keep number five and get rid of twenty four.
And then, if we do something to people in life, people, uh, people, uh, we have a chance to react, but we did, so...
Well, then you decide, you decide which one you...
I don't know, they're amazingly important.
Okay, then I'll stick with my original motion, remove number five.
I think that's the easiest.
We have a motion, can we...
Do you have a question?
I did.
Uh, what's customary, uh, is this the only town council that you're involved with?
It is, but I mean, I'm aware of other councils, public comment is pretty, uh, consistent among councils to allow that. As to order, is that what your question is, as to whether it's a first amendment?
Uh, if there's one or two.
Oh, it's customary for one, typically.
Customary for one.
Uh, but I mean, that's, that's not, don't take me as the authority on that, I mean, I...
I'm just curious about your experience.
But, you know, and it's, I think it varies, too, if there's special purposes for a meeting, but, I mean, for a general town council meeting, I don't think it's, uh, extraordinary to have one, I don't think it's extraordinary to have two, I mean, it's really up to the council, I think, as to how they want to structure their public comment, how much time they wanna give people, all that's kind of, all that time, manner, and place about public comments, really, is the structure of the council, so...
Okay. So, will people have six minutes, or will they have three? That's the question.
Three, per our rules, no.
No, no, I'm saying if you have two public comments, people have six minutes, if you have one, they have three.
Okay. Do we have a call, a motion, a call, question? A vote called?
I think we're ready to vote on the motion.
Okay, we are...
We don't have any questions about what the vote is.
No.
Okay.
You got something else to say?
What are we voting on?
We are voting on removing...
Number five.
The fifth item on the agenda.
Yes.
Audience comments. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Paul Horn.
No, for the first amendment.
First amendment. Okay. Paul.
No.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melons.
Yes.
Powers.
No.
And the motion is not passed?
I think the motion will set the consent calendar.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Do we have a second, Councilman Hall? And can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Paul Horn.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Not this.
Melons, not. Powers.
Yes.
And the motion is carried to adopt the consent calendar? Um, okay. Next item on the agenda is audience comments. Anyone from the audience would like to get up and address the council, mayor, if they can? You wanna go ahead and get up now?
Yes, Stacy Carson, um, Havington, Virginia. Uh, I come here again tonight, um, first, where I, I'm, I thank you for keeping those public comments. Due to the fact that I remember very clearly that Kevin Dotson said that this is where we needed to bring all of our issues. If, if I remember correctly, Kevin, uh, you said all the issues need to be brought here, and I have clearly brought issues here, especially with, um, the police department and the crime prevention officer, who started an altercation in this very town hall, and she's here tonight, and I do wanna ask, uh, the town attorney that, um, again, I, I am very interested in pressing charges, because no one's doing anything to make sure that the chief of police is reprimanded for the fact that he violated my rights to speak publicly at the very first January meeting that you were all at, and that he has also done other stuff, um, by quoting his paperwork wrong, and that at that January twenty first meeting, I also, uh, asked to FOIA Libra Kennedy's text messages from her phone, because she was on her phone during that January twenty first meeting, and I believe she was texting Cindy Mullins, who clearly, that all started, that whole altercation. Now, this could've gotten out of hand. Now, I'm hoping that the council will get in up in this issue, due to the fact that some police officers need to be reprimanded for their behavior. That was unbecoming, uh, an officer, especially a crime prevention officer, who I feel committed a crime. I was the victim. So, and considering that she instigated with more people to also, I'm sorry, excuse me, goodbye. Um, that she instigated several other people to, in, start into that whole altercation. So, I very much want some answers. Kevin Dotson also told me that, um, the videos have been deleted now, and, and again, here, here's my thing, town attorney, um, did you know that Cindy Mullins has on her phone the videos, because she was given back three years ago an app to download everything that goes on in this town hall? So, she probably still has that video, 'cause she's pretty proud of herself for doing what she did.
I thank you for your time, for your time to comment, your time is on fire.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience like to give a comment?
Let me be very clear, that Stacy started the altercation.
Name and where you live.
Jacob Campbell, ninety five eighty three, town of Hollywood, Rhode Island, Virginia. She started the altercation on January twenty first. Tell me what business she has driving from Lake Spring, Virginia to Pound, Virginia, once a month? No, she's not a citizen, she has no business in this town anymore, and she needs to stay away.
Would you like to make a comment? Would anyone else like to get up and give a comment?
Let me be very clear, that Stacy started the altercation.
Name and where you live.
Jacob Campbell, ninety five eighty three, town of Hollywood, Rhode Island, Virginia. She started the altercation on January twenty first. Tell me what business she has driving from Lake Spring, Virginia to Pound, Virginia, once a month? No, she's not a citizen, she has no business in this town anymore, and she needs to stay away.
Would you like to make a comment? Would anyone else like to get up and give a comment?
Cindy Mullins, Pound, Virginia. Not speaking as a representative of the town, I'm speaking for, as an individual citizen. I just wanna remind everybody in this room of the junior code section eighteen point two, dash four seventeen, you can look that up. I have been slandered, libeled, and defamed.
It's customary, is this the only town council that you're involved with?
It is, but I mean, I'm aware of other councils, public comment is pretty consistent among councils to allow that. As to order, is that what your question is, as to whether it's a first amendment?
If there's one or two.
Oh, it's customary for one to.
Customary for one.
But I mean, that's, that's not, don't take me as the authority on that, I mean, I.
I'm just curious about your experience.
But, you know, and it's, I think it varies too if there's special purposes for a meeting, but I mean, for a general town council meeting, I don't think it's extraordinary to have one, I don't think it's extraordinary to have two, I mean, it's really up to the council, I think, as to how they want to structure their public comment, how much time they want to give people, all that's kind of, all that time, manner, and place about public comments.
So will people have six minutes, or will they have three? That's the question.
There are rules in our.
No, no, I'm saying if you have two public comments, people have six minutes, if you have one, they have three.
Do we have a call, a motion to call question?
I think we're ready to vote on the motion.
Okay, we are.
We don't have any questions about what the vote is.
No.
You got something else to say?
Yes, what are we voting on?
We are voting on removing.
Number five.
The fifth item on the agenda.
Yes.
Audience comments. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Conhorn.
No for the first amendment.
Hall.
No.
Kennedy.
Yes, for the code of Virginia.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
No.
And the motion is not passed?
A motion will set the consent calendar?
Is there a second to that motion? Do we have a second, Councilman Hall? And can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Conhorn.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Kennedy. Mullins, no. Powers?
Yes.
And the motion is carried to adopt the consent calendar? Next item on the agenda is audience comments. Anyone from the audience would like to get up and address the council, mayor, if they can? You want to go ahead and get up now?
Yes, Stacy Carson, Havington, Virginia. I come here again tonight first where I, I, I thank you for keeping those public comments. Due to the fact that I remember very clearly that Kevin Dotson said that this is where we needed to bring all of our issues. If, if I remember correctly, Kevin, you said all the issues need to be brought here. And I have clearly brought issues here, especially with the police department and the crime prevention officer, who started an altercation in this very town hall. And she's here tonight, and I do want to ask the town attorney that, again, I, I am very interested in pressing charges because no one's doing anything to make sure that the chief of police is reprimanded for the fact that he violated my rights to speak publicly at the very first January meeting that you were all at. And that he has also done other stuff by quoting his paperwork wrong. And that at that January twenty-first meeting, I also asked to FOIA Libra Kennedy's text messages from her phone because she was on her phone during that January twenty-first meeting. And I believe she was texting Cindy Mullins, who clearly, that all started that whole altercation. Now, this could have gotten out of hand. Now, I'm hoping that the council will get in help in this issue due to the fact that some police officers need to be reprimanded for their behavior. That was unbecoming of an officer, especially a crime prevention officer, who I feel committed a crime. I was the victim. So, and considering that she instigated with more people to also, I'm sorry. That she instigated several other people to, in, start under that whole altercation. So, I very much want some answers. Kevin Dotson also told me that the videos have been deleted now. And, and again, here, here's my thing, town attorney. Did you know that Cindy Mullins has on her phone the videos? Because she was given back three years ago an app to download everything that goes on in this town hall. So she probably still has that video because she's pretty proud of herself for doing what she did.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your time is not expired. Anyone else from the audience like to give a comment?
Let me be very clear, that Stacy started the altercation.
Name and where you live.
Jacob, Kansas, ninety-five eighty-three, town hall right. She started the altercation on January twenty-first. Tell me what business she has driving from late spring, Virginia to pound, Virginia, once a month? No, she's not a citizen, she has no business in this town anymore, and she needs to stay away.
Your comment, would anyone else like to get up and give a comment?
Good evening, calling in. Late spring. First, I just want to mention, I'm currently writing a ten-page paper for my college essay. And I'm just asking if any of y'all would allow me to question you. It's just a couple of questions for my essay as a source. But also, just to, as a response to what he had just said. My mom has every reason to come back, my dad grew up here, and I grew up here, and I'm her son. And my dad fought very, he fought quite a lot for this town. He went to court, had a stroke that put him in the hospital, where he then got sick and died. So, if you really want to say that my mom has no business being here, my dad died for this town, and nobody seems to care. So before anybody tries to say that my mom doesn't have any business, she has every right. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, and would someone else in the audience like to give a comment? Do you state your name? Whether you're, we're out of the town.
Cindy Mullins, pound, Virginia. Not speaking as a representative of the town, I'm speaking for as an individual citizen. I just want to remind everybody in this room of the junior code section eighteen point two dash four seventeen. You can look that up. I have been slandered, libeled, and defamed. Those carry hefty penalties. I will remind people of that. And I encourage anyone who wants to take charges, criminal charges, please do. Please do. I have been thoroughly investigated by the Virginia State Police, there was no crime committed. Please watch.
You will alert the state if there's ever anything serious.
How do you?
You'll alert the state attorney if someone crosses the line.
Oh, with regards to public comment, yeah. Certainly, I mean, really to just address that now, since you've given me the opportunity. The only time anybody's speech can be restricted is if it's content neutral. So the content of their speech is a lot more restrictive than the time that they have. The only time you can really restrict any sort of comment is if it gets to the point where it's disrupting the order of the meeting and the proceeding itself. You know, back and forth name-calling, just a complete disintegration order, you can stop things at that point. But that, I think, becomes pretty clear and obvious that it's.
Would anyone else from the audience like to stand up and give a comment? We can move to the next item on the agenda, and that is the reports. Would the police department like to give a report?
No.
Next item is the police report interview. Is the, do we have a copy of the police?
No, sir, as is usual.
Okay, is the, I do have some questions. Are the, I prefer your approach. So, one of the things that we've tasked you to do is to check on the shops that show signs of having perhaps marijuana selling point one. Is that still continuing? Okay, and just to clarify, I thought it was a crack pipe, but someone said it was a bomb. I really don't know the difference. Is that something which would cause you to have pause to go in and see if marijuana's being traded at a shop?
Would it cause me to have pause?
To go in on a bi-weekly basis to see if everything's okay in a shop?
No.
So, don't you typically smoke drugs in a bomb?
Well, that's what most people use it for.
Right.
I don't have any experience with it.
Okay, so, you know, as a council member, I don't know what the other council members would say, but I would say if a business has a bomb on their sign, I would say that would be just as much of an indication that they're probably distributing marijuana.
Could be.
As having a leaf of marijuana.
Sure.
Ever heard of a head shop?
The what?
A head shop.
No.
I should do a little research into head shops.
I mean, what do you, explain it to me?
I, I would prefer you do your own research.
But anyway. So is that something, so I guess the council would have to clarify, I mean, having like, you know, sharing, adult sharing, that's an indication that marijuana's probably distributed. Having a picture of a green leaf, it's a marijuana leaf, it's an indication marijuana's probably being distributed. Is a bomb, according to the police department, an indication?
It could be.
Okay, is it, does it meet, in your mind, the qualification of going and checking your shop?
It merits being looked into, yes.
Okay, so that would fall under the category of what council has passed?
Sure.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely.
Have you seen one? Have I seen what? Have you seen an example of that? In Main Street? Okay. Just look to your right and go home. I have not, I have not. No. I thought it was a crack pipe, I don't know the difference. I've never seen my daddy smoke, back then. He smoked all his eyes. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Anything else, please do? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Anyone from the fire department like to give a report?
Had the fire department done their paperwork yet, the independent of town, or?
They still haven't.
With the town manager, please give a report?
Yes, so in your packets, you will find the SLFR paperwork showing that we owe zero dollars while that paperwork is sent in and approved. So there's, there is the proof of that. Also, today's the tax deadline, so that, we expect them to probably see it with us sometime this week or next to hopefully get our pre-audit set up. So I also got an email, or not an email, but some mail about, just some information for you all to have that the Mountain Empire Older Citizens is going to have a walk to raise money in, at Bullet Park on May the fourth, if anyone would like to participate. Also, the bad buildings final report will be presented on May the seventh from five, and that will be at five thirty till seven P M. here at the town hall. We had a community meeting on April the first with Appalachian Voices and Monuments Across Appalachian Virginia, where the final design for the Labor Monument was presented to the public. So I'll pass that down, and if anybody else wants to see, there is copies up here.
So are you saying that the Department of Treasury notice has been taken care of, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yes.
So it's no more?
No, I mean, we'll still be reporting on it, but the owed funds that we got the notice about, that's, we do not owe.
Okay, so we take it off, it's taken care of?
Yes, yep. So this is the final lockup for the monument, through the Monuments Across Appalachian Virginia grant that we have. Also, you'll find in your packet a copy of the Cumberland Airport Commission's financial report. George Dean is our representative on the Cumberland Airport commission. We also did, we also did some random drug testing this month of two employees. We just felt like best practice to throw some names in the hat, check a couple of people. Also, we went to the board of supervisors this month, they, we found out last minute that they were offering forty thousand dollars through tourism money to each town. So we did go to that board of supervisors' meeting, and they are willing to give the town a pound. We had to come up with something kind of quickly to get approved. Forty thousand dollars to redo the old tennis courts as pickleball courts at the high school property, as well as to place disco, a disc golf course up there. That'll open up the opportunity for some tournaments and things to bring people in. Since we already have an existing M O U. for the pound hospital property, we also discussed the use of the football field for the disc golf course, and since both of those have a growing interest, it creates a lot of opportunities for the town. We also discussed using the property to bring in harvest host. That would allow people with RVs to park short-term, have a safe place to park, and in turn, they use our businesses and would be able to, that would be able to bring people in. And the board of supervisors also indicated that they're interested in extending our M O U. We still have about a year and a half left on, year and a half, almost two years left on the M O U., and they're interested in extending that for us. So I'm going to get something written up and sent to them later this week. They just said to have it to them before their next board meeting, so.
Are they, are we still pursuing the boundary adjustment for two school properties? Is that on the radar?
We didn't discuss that at the board of, we didn't take that to the board this month, but it is on the radar, they just haven't.
Public hearing has to be held here first.
Yeah.
So we can do that by next month?
Do you want to make that motion?
Okay, one of the other businesses. The R V. parking, was that up at the, up at the old high school property?
Yes, we could use the high school property for them to park their RVs there, it would give them a safe place to park. We don't have to provide any kind of electricity or water or anything like that, it's just a safe place to park. And in turn, they use our businesses, you know, our facilities.
Okay, good.
Also, just something for council to keep in mind, Abby will be studying abroad later in the year, beginning of next year. So we might need to look into possibly getting an assistant treasurer or an assistant to her to help while she's gone.
That's the end of this year though, right?
Is it the end of this year? Okay, end of this year.
Is there anything else the manager would like to bring to council?
Um, I think, um, yes, actually. There, you also have in your packet the quote from the ITNEX for the computers for the admin office, that we need for four stations. The total cost will be on the, the second page at the top.
Thank you very much, and is there any, anyone from the E D A. like to give a report?
Okay. We had a meeting on the seventh, and we have, we now have, we're going to have to try and bring in some money because we're paying out for electricity and water. Anyway, I've, I've got a, I have a Grant Hamilton coming in to check in the basement of the house to make sure everything's okay so we could start progressing with making it a B and B or something like that. We'll make it into something where maybe we can bring in some money. But he's going to check on it and do a report, he's going to do that tomorrow. We now have twenty, twenty, almost twenty-five, twenty-five hundred dollars in the bank, but it goes out quick. We want to add Lucas Short to our E D A. committee, he is willing to come in and help us with, I think he maybe knows about grant writing and stuff like that, for us maybe to get a grant to help the E D A. to help with. But we've got a lot of stuff in that house right now, we've got curtains and dishes. You know, we just need a couple more things, you know, we need the hot water heater. I think that's about it, I can't remember what I told you.
Internet service?
Yeah, it will have to be an internet service and stuff in it, but anyway, it's kind of where we stand, we're still in the positive. So he will, we should know something tomorrow from him as well, I don't know, he's going to make tomorrow afternoon.
Can you give us like a short resonate on the gentleman you want to be on the E D A.?
Uh, I could, I could.
We can vote on it next month.
We do have to vote on it.
I would make the motion to go ahead and appoint him for a four-year term. You know, Short Family Farms, the.
Lots of them.
Hang on, so, yeah. He has a good business. So I'll make a little motion to go ahead and appoint him.
Anything to be very interested in helping to.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
What is the ratio currently of people who live in town versus out of town on E D A.?
I don't know. I mean, I haven't looked into that.
You've got Karen, Jimmy, and Doris all.
Yeah, I'm the, yeah.
And you've got Lucas, well, if you add Lucas.
He's out of town.
He's out of town, yeah. Lee, Karen, which?
Laura.
Laura, she's out of town. Laura, Jimmy, Bo, me, and then it'd be Lucas.
And Jimmy.
And Karen, yeah, Karen's on it.
So the majority is in.
Yeah.
Having a business owner that's doing a good business, it's, yeah.
We have a motion, is there any more discussion?
Someone said?
Yes, we have a sub motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote of that, please?
Conhorn.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
And the motion passes? Is there anything else in the E D A.? Okay, planning commission. Is there a report from the planning commission?
Do you remember, Randy, do you want to address that?
We just continue to talk about the comprehensive plan.
The only thing the comprehensive plan is lacking at this point is some of the, the charts with regard to the statistics and the, some of those socks have been shut down with the new government administration. So we're trying to find places that we can get those statistics to add to the comprehensive plan so that we can move forward with that.
It's because it's hurting citizens, yeah, basically.
That's, that's all that's left.
Well, the next item, moving to old business, we have D E Q Appalachian Voices slash bad buildings, is there update?
So written address, part of that, so the bad building which reported is going to be on May?
Seventh.
Seven, seven, five thirty here at town hall. Appalachian Voices is still working with us. D E Q, we have requested an extension on the D E Q. grant because of waiting for what's happening with the, on people's bank building.
Next, what is the, the landslide, what is the update on that?
Waiting on FEMA.
Okay.
FEMA has to approve the, the design, and they haven't done that yet. We reached out to legislators to try and get that pushed. Morgan Griffith's office actually spoke with Cody Mump, however, yesterday from his office. He said that he did a backflip as soon as he has any warrant on it, and actually wrote it to Senator Morgan yesterday. And I do have somebody to reach out to his office.
So once FEMA approves the plans, will we go, we have funding board and everything?
We have to pay it out and get reimbursed.
How much do we have in our treasury right now, Brittany?
You have a bank report.
Yeah, there's a bank account in the packet. The general operating fund is sitting at four oh seven.
Two hundred and seven thousand. So we would be able to pay for it?
You have it.
And then get reimbursed.
Yeah, there's some that's already been paid out for the first part of the stabilization that we're waiting on reimbursement for now.
The next item on the agenda is the elected officials as paid employees, that's the ordinance.
So you all would find that I distributed a revised copy reflecting the amendment that included the two-thirds vote exception we discussed at last meeting, so that's got that one in there. There's a copy, by the way, I said over here on the table, if anybody wants to review as well. So given that we held the public hearing required by our last meeting, I mean, I think we can go ahead and go forward. There's voting on that.
And that motion will prove?
Do we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Can we have a roll call vote of this motion, please?
Conhorn.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Kennedy.
No, because it's covered in state code and courtyard ready.
Mullins.
So we don't have to have this, is it?
Are we opening, are we reopening up for discussion?
I think we're voting on it.
Probably you've made some discussion that you withheld from the discussion period.
No, I told you why I was voting no.
So you were treasurer at one time of this town, so.
We're an interim basis to get tax tickets out.
Just to stick to the point of where, I mean, do we have a motion to open discussion, or are we voting?
Do we have a motion to open, yes, do we have a motion to open discussion, back up?
No.
No, okay.
Somebody does.
We will continue now.
So no.
Powers.
No.
We've, we've had an elected official as treasurer, and we, we, oh. The next item on the agenda is the live broadcasting meetings.
So I've been looking into some video camera options, looks like we can get, you know, some video cameras off Amazon from, they range anywhere from seventy to, you know, beaucoup de money, just depending, just depending on how much council would like to spend on that. If you guys want to give me like a range to stay in, I'm happy to order one. We can also set up a YouTube channel. And as far as embedding it on the website, I'll actually talk about that just a little bit later in the town website update because we can get a quote for like redoing the website. It is currently up to date, but we did get a quote for redoing it to embed video onto it.
Okay, any more discussion?
So it's moving forward?
Yes.
You need to have like an amount scheduled, or?
I just didn't know what range council would want to stay in, you know, I mean, we can get a little video camera for seventy dollars, we can spend quite a bit of money. I didn't know what range you all would want me to stay in as far as that goes, I don't. I didn't know what range you all would want me to stay in as far as that goes. I don't, you know, you can, you can do a lot with those little video cameras.
Yeah. Well, I make the motion that we allocate five hundred dollars to go toward the live broadcast of meetings. That's pretty much what I have in my little setup there.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
I do.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would make a substitute motion to allocate five hundred dollars for recording equipment to post the videos on a website, but not for live broadcasting.
I mean, other communities do it.
Do we have a second to the substitute motion?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion on the substitute motion?
Yeah, I mean, that defeats the motion. I mean, we already have video that goes up after the meeting. What this motion is, is saying, it's just like the, you know, I mean, there's a bunch of municipal places in some county, uh, school board, I remember watching them live. I mean, there's a whole bunch of different, uh, organizations that have live broadcast of meetings. You're just, you're killing the motion by offering the substitute.
I'm not trying to kill the motion. I'm trying to kill the drama, the spin. Yeah, you're putting them on a YouTube channel. Are, are you actually putting those out?
Yeah, it's my YouTube channel.
Okay.
So, I mean, to have it live, it would not, by the officials of the town, would be different than having it on a YouTube channel.
We can still put it on a YouTube channel for the town.
Yeah.
And then we don't have to snag it or paddles.
Well, if we have it live, they'll be able to watch it in real time, so.
So I guess it's a philosophy, one that people who stay at home have a right to watch the meetings, just like the people everywhere. I say they do, you say they don't.
They can still watch the meeting. They still watch the YouTube channel, though.
Not everybody.
Well, if they don't have YouTube, how are they going to watch it?
The, the whole issue is the live broadcast of meetings. What you're doing is you're killing the motion. That's what you're doing. That's, I mean, just to be honest.
You made your motion, I made the substitute.
Right. So we'll vote on the substitute motion. Now, we'll vote no, because that does away with the live broadcasting meetings.
You're entitled to vote however you choose. I, I don't see the need to bring back the drama. I, I mean, you pay attention to Facebook. Do you, do you remember a website called Topics many years ago?
No.
No?
I never got on Topics.
Well, it was like the Mean Girls site that just went in there and talked about everybody, carried out the personal vendettas, and Facebook has some new topics. So, no, I can't, I couldn't support anything.
So you're against live broadcasting meetings?
The live broadcast, yeah.
Okay. Now I'm for live broadcast.
If, if the broadcast is not live, but if it's in its entirety, what's the difference?
I just think it'll be live. I mean, it could be a difference in philosophy. What, what's the benefit? People can be here in real time.
That's.
How much delay would it be?
None.
You know, between the live and, and the recorded.
Mine goes up a day, maybe two days, maybe the morning after. I don't know.
But in its entirety?
Yeah. As much as we get recorded. Sometimes they have problems with the camera, but, like last, it was two times ago, we had to get video from another camera. It was not. Something happened and it did not start.
So that could have a lot of also.
It would be more official if it were by the town, I guess.
But that doesn't mean it has to be broadcast.
So we're splitting hairs.
Well, I mean, if you want the people watching it in real time, or if you want them to get it, you know, a day later, maybe twelve hours later, overnight, a few days later.
When the official video got posted, it would be based upon the efficiency of Town Hall, rather than having it livestreamed.
I thought he was posting.
Well, he's talking about if we were to get another video. Either, if it were not livestreamed, Town Hall would post it whenever, whatever, whenever they posted it. But if it were live, they would have to, you know, worry about that, so.
That people could post from what you posted and have comments, is that correct?
It is open for comments. I don't, know that I get too many comments. I don't.
It's either comments or the old copy and.
But that's anything.
Well, I mean, we're, we're dealing with the Town Hall that still hasn't, as far as I know, updated the website.
It is, yes.
It is updated. Good. It took quite a few months, and so I just don't trust that Town Hall will get it up in a speedy manner. It's not live.
Okay. Well, is there any more discussion on substitute motion? And that is to change from live to putting the money towards, or toward?
Yeah. Is there a cost difference?
No.
No.
Okay.
Just whether you want it instant or whether you want it baked in crock pot.
Okay. Do we have a roll call of, of the substitute motion?
Can we have it, Randy?
Can we have the substitute motion, Randy?
Kaufhorn.
Uh, can we have?
Read the motion.
Yeah. Can we, can you read back to the council the motion? To know what we're voting on?
Whether the broadcast is live or twelve hours later, or a day later.
I, I can reiterate my motion. I'm good with, with allocating five hundred dollars for video equipment to, um, record the meetings and post on a website, but not to livestream.
So that, that's the motion. It's a substitute motion. Put the money towards recording, but not live. Can we have a roll call, please?
Kaufhorn.
No.
Paul.
No.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Miles.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay. And the substitute motion passes? Here's the next item on the agenda, and that is audits. Any discussion? Or any further updates?
What's the update on that?
Today being tax day, he didn't, he said that it would be after the fifteenth, so I expect sometime this week that he'll get back with us.
And we are getting paid for by grant?
No. No, the grant was denied.
Any more?
Well, it's something we have to do, so.
Yeah.
We want to audit stuff. Just want to make sure to move ahead with that.
Yep.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Department of Treasury. Now, did we say that was?
Yeah, we owe zero.
Okay, that's wonderful. Okay, next item is town website. Can we have an official update on that, please?
Yes, the town website is currently up to date, um, with all new, all the correct council members, all of, um, Town Hall's emails, all of the current E D A and planning commission members. Um, you will find in your packet a quote, um, from the, his name's Brent Jakowski. He very kindly helped me get everything up to date. Um, he, uh, we talked about redoing the website, the possibility of allowing people to pay their bills online, the possibility of embedding video onto our website, um, and being able to post minutes and everything streamlined. It is expensive. Um, he quoted roughly five thousand dollars to redo everything.
And I'm seeing a plan, seventy-five dollars a month?
Mm-hmm. That would be a maintenance plan.
Okay. We have motion to, motion.
So we're going to start posting minutes to the website and agendas to the website and all of that?
Yes.
Could that be you or?
Uh, he's going to show us, there's a little, for that website, there is a, um, it's through GitHub, and I'm learning how to use it. It's a little, seems to me a little complicated, but.
We have to.
With the maintenance on the updated website, that would then, all we would have to do is send it to him, keep it uploaded.
Have to snap Lennon's picture, but.
Well, yeah.
That's good. I thought you wanted to be anonymous.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good. Um, any more discussion on town website? Okay. Move on to item number thirteen. That is the pocket, park, and slide update. Give an update on slide. Let me talk a little bit about that.
Um, we have, we're waiting on FEMA. We can't do a vote vote until FEMA approves the design. And then we have the issue with the glass wall. Um, so we have to determine what's going to happen with the glass wall. And some of it is an issue for close session.
Okay. Can we have grant updates?
What is, what's the timeframe for this?
The unveiling will be in the spring of twenty-six. We have to have all of the money spent by the end of this year. Um, there's still, we're sitting on, what do we say, Brittany? About thirty thousand dollars of the second payment and the third payment for that grant is still yet to come.
Yes, I think that's what we came to.
Do what?
Uh, yeah, I think that's, that's what we came to.
So spring twenty-sixth is the projected time for the slide to be fixed as well? Would that be?
No.
Okay, and that's undetermined.
That's what we're waiting on FEMA to approve the design for.
So you can have the park without having the slide fixed?
No, the slide's going to have to be fixed before being well-produced.
So the, the park is contingent upon the slide being fixed?
The monument is not contingent upon the slide being fixed. We have talked to G S I, who's the contractor, B dot's contractor, that we went through for repairing the slope and doing the retaining wall. They have indicated that we could go ahead with construction of the monument wall and the amphitheater, and that it would not hinder the work process at all. Just the biggest, biggest thing is waiting on FEMA to, to get us approved, right?
Everybody call your congressman, Morgan Griffiths.
Oh, there's a lot more that, that need to be called about, and we'll get to that when we get to the grant updates.
I do.
Okay, that's, uh, next item is campsite update. Do we have an update on that, campsites?
Of course. We have the permit for the campsite from the county. We're still looking at, um, the option of if any kind of toiletry can be put up there. Back and forth with the Health Department, and Debbie has talked to possibly, and allowed maybe some contractors to, to maybe look at it, but.
I have three that's interested, yes.
Would you like to address them?
Would, would you like to provide information?
Yes, I'll be.
Sure, I'll come up there.
Um, as you know, the, uh, the Ginyac, P D Act team is doing the design for the campground. So we're in the middle of, of getting that accomplished. Um, we've been working with the Health Department on the toilet issue, what type of, hopefully compostable toilet that we can put up there or something simple that would be, um, use, useful. So we're kind of waiting on that. Um, I have a couple folks that I asked about bidding on. We don't have to have a bid. We can still do it in different places. Or we can choose to have, you know, someone get on it. We have to find out to that one year. Just waiting on stuff to let us know what to happen.
What is the town currently responsible for with this campsite? Town head?
Handling the grant money. Since it's town property, I suppose that, um, there'd be some.
The property's already insured.
Yes.
Yeah, it's already insured.
If there's a problem there, so, I don't know. Town law would enforce that.
Oh, that might come along too, so we have, yeah, we have talked with, we have talked with the county with regard to if there is a need, that if no one's available for any town, the county can do as well.
Moving that and devolving first, doing the maintenance. We've been doing maintenance for seven years now, keeping it moved and keeping all of ours get back. We'll have someone to, um, checking to see if we need anything else repaired or whatever. It's been, it's been logged here since it began.
There's also two gates up there, so the, what's the name of the hunt club, Debbie?
Cameron, Cameron and Perfishing Gang Club.
Yeah, so the Cameron and Perfishing Gang Club has the ability to allow us, um, the ability to access the first gate, and they have indicated that, um, they would have a problem if there's a problem, if they're on the property, rescuing them, anything of that nature, they will provide a key. They don't want everybody to have a key, and I did talk to them about one being left here at Town Hall, the Police Department having a key, and they're okay with that. We did talk with Forest Service, um, with regard to the Forest Service gate, and what they indicated was that we would have to do a lease.
We're going to have to get a special use permit in order for us to, to get the material there to build the campsite. And if we need to access it, um, my mother, the other time, I was talking with Forest Service today. I mean, how, how to get that taken care of, that, um, process of applying for that. So there's, seems like there's a few more steps that I didn't expect, but I consider those planned.
I've never been there. Is, is there like a park and then walk to the campsites? Or can you drive right up to them?
No, no, no. It's going to be, you either have to walk in, um, ride your horse or ride your bicycle.
Okay. Uh, so there's a locked, there, at the parking area, there's a locked gate?
The Forest Service has a gate across it. If you drive up to town, there's a half mile from U S twenty-three on the layover. There's a big, broad, yellow gate. That's the Forest Service.
I'm going to go look at that.
The Hunt Club has, um, a key to the house.
And then the Hunt Club has a locked gate?
And then there's a, beyond the Hunt Club property, there's another locked Forest Service gate. That if we, you know, if it's necessary for us to get through that gate, we can get a key and do that. But it's not something that they're just going to hand out, you know, willy-nilly to.
Yeah.
Willy-nilly. Bit of one.
Okay. I need to go look at that.
I'm going to check it out. Yeah, you do.
Make it right, Dave.
Tank me up.
I would love to. It's a beautiful place. If you haven't been there, you need to visit it. Right now, I was up there today. It's, it's green and grassy, and it looks really nice. You know, I think it's something worth visiting.
There was a question of fencing this thing, and there was an exorbitant quota on a fence. Are we compelled to do anything like that?
So I was actually going to address that, Mr. Powers, because I was asked by Councilman Kaufhorn. Last meeting to look into, I suppose, if, if the campsite has to be accompanied with the trail ride. That was more of your question, if, if it was.
Well, then at the town of town, has to be tied to this campsite, how we would invest.
Okay, so how we would invest. Yeah, I mean, um, is to just address your concern first. I'm still in conversation, um, with Mr. Gottson, Matthew Gottson, interim for some of the property owners who raise some issues here, addressed to council about having fencing done. I'm forming a legal opinion that, that thinks we do not need fencing, based on some case law I've seen from the fifties that I'll spare you, not going into property law easements and having your eyes placed over. But we're, I'm still in conversation with Mr. Gottson about finding some sort of resolution to that. I think, of course, he's in the position that a fence needs to be put up, that we, by owning the easement or the right of way, uh, have a obligation to what's called a covenant, kind of like what homeowners associations have, where they force you to, more or less to refrain from certain things. This would be a covenant that runs with the land, he's saying that requires you to put a fence. But that is a, a very nuanced legal thing. It, it is, it is some of the deepest areas of property law that we're getting into, which I enjoy, but, um, yet to, yet to determine affirmatively if we'll need a fence. I think we're still at this. I think we're still at the stage where we're not ready to, uh, I mean, you know, we're not having campers coming up next month or the month after, right? We're still in early stages, or in not early stages, but still leading stages.
We are.
Let me, let me fucking make this clear. The campsites have nothing to do with the property. The trail can be going through the property.
Right, and then...
The campsites are at least half a mile from any property that they own.
And let me ask you this too, because I, I really probably need to go on a hike up there or something. Maybe with Mr. Gottson, so I make sure that we don't, uh, trespass issues or what have you. But with the easement, uh, in the, in the old railroad bed, the CNO railroad bed, is that the only way to access the campsite?
Unless you go through, um, Jerry Bennett's property.
And, and that's the...
It's the only private property that connects directly to the campsites. It's surrounded on three sides by national parks.
Right, and, and there's not necessarily a trail on this property that would have to be formed, I assume?
Through his property?
Yeah, so it's, in other words, if there was some sort of issue where the town would have to put up, you know, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars worth of fencing in order to have that, the campsite accessible?
He has an ask for any fencing along his property.
He has what?
He has not asked for any fencing along his property, that I'm aware of.
I'm talking about if, if the only way to get to the campsite is through a trail that goes by the property owner, so you want the fencing, right? And we have, and we, it turns out that we're legally required by a covenant to put that fencing up. If we make an alternative way of, of accessing the property that doesn't touch it through granting of easement?
If, if you're coming in from the Hunt Club side, it doesn't touch their property?
So there's a way in that does not touch or concern the land of the people who have come to council about the fencing?
Correct, oh, yeah.
Okay.
But that would be coming over Jerry's property?
No.
No.
Of whom?
No.
Cause that, that's to me my central concern, because I, I, I think we still yet to determine, Matt and I have yet to determine a legal question of whether absolutely we're convincing fencing is necessary or not. But I do wanna know if there's alternatives legally to get campers to the campsite that doesn't touch upon the land of, uh, I believe it's the Stalers.
Yes. Absolutely. And nothing precludes people from going up there at this point and camping?
Right.
As far as that goes? They're just, like, you know, it's kind of, it's kinda one of those things of out of sight, out of mind? And, you know, you, you have no control over who's there at this point? It's just there.
I mean, legally, posture, that would be, they, they could, I suppose, at any time file a suit to force the town to put up a fence. I believe that's why they hired Mr. Gottson. That's why we're in conversation to see what the way that is. If there's any other questions about where we're at legally, then I'm happy to ease them, otherwise I'll defer to, to you for the rest of this.
I have lots of mapping. I have the original CNO railroad surveys. I have surveys from a private surveyor here in town that's, um, got all that property in, in that area. I'd be happy to share this with you if you need.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, if you, maybe you're sticking around after me, or you, you gotta head home?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm...
Okay, uh, maybe I can get some contact information for you, or maybe just give you a minute?
I've shared some of your information with...
Okay, yeah, just, just connect me.
With Matt. There's, um, Clay, is this, what's his name? Sturgill, you know, his attorney.
Uh, is it Will, or maybe, uh, is that Jeff?
Jeff.
Jeff Sturgill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He has all the information. Cause the, the person who purchased the entire jungle and right of way is on his front.
Yeah, cause there's a lot, there's a lot to dig into, so the more information I can give, the merrier, I appreciate it.
Do you actually see it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's hard just looking at maps and things to determine. The only place that I would see it would be appropriate to put some fencing would be on the, along the trail off the way to the Stalers. Actually had someone build where it was supposed to go, by the way. Originally there were a gate on each side. And if the railroad's coming like this, there's a gate on each side and there was some fencing along that edge. Just to keep people from, people, originally it's to keep cow, their cows from being on the railroad.
That's always where these old railroad fences start, those camps.
You can still see a lot of the old fencing up there. When they built the roads in to do some logging, they took the old gates out. I would say, you know, if they wanted to fit the gates, I think it would be a big deal to do that. It would be a big cost, you know, cost that I should do it. I don't know what kind of estimate anyone's getting, but it, uh, it shouldn't be that, that big a deal. I'd have quite a bit of fencing.
I thank you for coming up and presenting before council your ideas, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And just to answer, uh, and you can, uh, just to answer Mr. Cawthorn's question about investing property, I think the only potential complication in that would be any sort of grant money that's been received and allocated already. I'm assuming that would not be something that we could, you know, um, we would have to eat the loss on that, am I correct? Otherwise, you don't have to do anything with property in that town.
Just let it sit there?
Just let it sit there. You could try to sell it, you know, if, if somebody would be interested in buying it. My opinion is there's been great money expended on it. So that would be, I suppose, even that loss for the town. Legally divesting it would not be any sort of further expense, being, uh, it's out there in, in the county, so.
Thank you. Is there any, uh, grant updates?
Oh, there's lots of grant updates. So the EJ CPS, I know that, Emma, I had mentioned the last time, that, um, that was terminated by the current administration. There is an appeal in on that, but we haven't heard anything on that. Um, legislators have been contacted on that. On the brick grant, we just got word on Friday that that grant has been terminated. We stood to get no money from that grant. It was technical assistance only. FEMA had come in and done the initial, um, needs assessment. And, and it's, it's just dead, um, at this point. Now, the American, I'm sorry, American Center for ACLC, or A, yeah, in Whitesburg. Mary Cromer works for that agency and they did reach out and asked to, we wanna do anything? And I told them, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have any problem talking to the legislators, talking to the newspapers. I certainly can understand pausing grants that have not been awarded yet, that this, this was awarded and we were in the middle of the process. MAC grant, we've already talked about. The DEQ grant, we asked for the extension on. The VDM grant, we've talked about, waiting on FEMA. The Arc Ready Grant is in a pending status. That is a capacity building grant, which will pay agri's wages for this year and next year. At the Chamber of Commerce Gala, T-Mobile, there was a representative from T-Mobile that reached out and said, we have a hometown grant. I think we can give you some money, so I have information on that. We have not applied for it yet. Brittany, what grants am I leaving out? There's a lot.
The, did you do the VDM?
Do what, VDM?
Did you do that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just hop over to the Grants R S whenever we can and see if we can find us something. I may or may not have left something out. We've got all this vows in front of me and I can't, and can't thank a ring, so.
Next update. Um, we go on to new business, and first item is the bridge flag. I would not approve.
I was just gonna see it. The last time I looked, it was looking pretty tattered. And I didn't know if the town was responsible to put the bridge flag up going across. Either we need to put up a new flag or take down the old one that's tattered. That's one, or put wood.
I don't know if Bill originally put the flag up.
Probably Bill Gillon.
And he wants, I'm pretty sure.
So we either need to decide as a council to replace the flag, probably with fifty dollars, or to just take it down.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion to replace the flag, make sure the proper lighting is working.
Is there a lighting there?
There used to be.
Is it a summer, a summer light?
Yeah.
Do we have a second to that motion?
May.
Okay, do we have a second? Is there any discussion?
May.
Can you assist?
Yeah, there he is. I don't, yeah, I'm not opposed to fixing the flag. I'm just not sure why it has to be a big production. If you see something wrong, rather than make a big production, I don't understand why we don't call somebody or email somebody and say, can we do anything to fix this? Rather than make a big production of it.
Well, the attorney has, you know, a FOIA training, in which you're meant to discuss business on the, uh, email. And so all business should be brought to the council.
Actually, it's not that we can't email each other individually. We shouldn't email each other as a group and discuss business that way.
I mean, I haven't, um, per se, on any social media, I just put it on the agenda and brought it up, said fifty dollars for a flag. And that's not a big deal.
It, it's not a big deal to type fifty dollars for a pa, a flag? But as far as that goes, you could have emailed Brittany and said, can we do something to fix this? Doesn't preclude Brittany from emailing the various council members and saying, what can we do to fix this?
I think, well, bringing business, I mean, I'm not embarrassing anybody, I'm just taking care of a problem.
I, I'm not indicating that, well, and see, that's where I was at. What is the big deal about a flag on the bridge? Why can we not just fix it without making a production of it? If somebody had sent me a message and just said, okay, let me run out and buy a flag and get it out there, you know?
Well, offer substitute motion that you'll take care of the flag, that's different, isn't it?
I, I'm fine with that. Nah, I don't care to type care of the flag.
So we can authorize, would you work, candidate to take care of the flag?
Okay. Do we have a second? Do we need a second to that?
I'm second.
Okay, we have a second. It's just been clarified in discussion. Uh, can we have, is there any more discussion?
I don't know that we need to vote, we need to type care of the flag.
None is opposed?
There's a motion, so we can vote on it.
We have a request to vote. Uh, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Of course.
Yes.
Oh. Kennedy.
Absolutely.
Moles.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes. So the philosophy is, we don't need to take care of everything in front of the public. That's the philosophy that...
No, the philosophy is something as minute as a flag being replaced. I don't know why we have to make a big production out of it.
And I didn't, I just made a motion to replace it.
Okay, that's the one.
Next item is Heritage Days. Um, is there any discussion or motion?
So Heritage Days will start on May the twenty-second. We usually kick it off with kicking in the pound on Thursday evening. Friday night, we'll have Kids Night. We keep all that, you know, activities and games and things free for the kids. We're gonna have a DJ, Jamal Potter's gonna be there. We're also gonna have a bounce house. The Lions Club's gonna set up and various, um, other people are gonna set up and do some gangs for the kids and stuff. And then Saturday would be the, the music, the food vendors, and, um, people coming to sell their items as vendors.
Okay. So any more discussion on Heritage Days?
So just Thursday night, you said?
Yeah.
The next item is street and sidewalk repair. Any discussion?
Well, I'd just like to see that, and I've talked to the state man, they don't do streets inside of town. Just like I told you. They do not repair any inside of town.
Hmm, not true.
The main road did. But they don't the off-street, Beach Street, Apple Street, they do not.
Town don't.
I'm paying taxes for them.
Not for the roads.
What's my taxes for?
Some of these roads are labeled as private drives. Have you looked at it to see if it's a private drive?
I wouldn't think Beach Street or Apple Street is. It's inside of the city limits or town limits.
Yeah, so is the one up by where the, uh...
Church Street is probably not.
It's not fixed.
The Church Street, yeah. Um, but the one up by Sherry Stanley, where she lives, and I can't think of the other lady's name that reached out. That's private.
Well, I don't know why the town can't take care of that.
We don't have the money to do streets.
Oh, I guess. You don't have money for a flag either.
Nobody said we didn't have money for a flag.
Well, we should have said, it, when the flag's mentioned, we gotta jump on that right quick.
It's, it's mentioned on an agenda.
I know that.
If somebody had had the testicular ordered to pick up a phone or an email and said, leave them. So, one, it's, if, if Bill Gillon put it up, no, it's not necessarily a town responsibility. But I'm willing to go fix a flag.
Well, go for it.
It's not that big a deal.
Go for it.
So why it needs to be on the agenda is being...
If it hadn't been, it should have been done shortly. Not wait till...
I mean, I guess the question is, like Curtis Hill, we're out in, that's clearly a private road. And so, you know, we all chip in, maybe every ten years, and we repay it. And so the question would be, like, the streets in the bottom. You know, the Hickory and the, you know, all the different streets, you know, all the Riverside Circle, Riverside Drive, you know? Now, of course, Shockey Holler would be a public road, but these streets in the bottom, maybe we could check into to see, you know, whether they're owned by the people who live on the streets or if they're owned by the town, or if they're owned by, because like, for instance, years ago, we had a Castle Phillips, had a piece of property up on Austin Hills. And the town had made some agreements that when it developed and went in, we would put sewer line in. And so maybe the town manager could look into that and see what, if there's any obligations in putting in the subdivision in the bottom that the town made to maintain, you know, any of the streets down there. And check on it next month. See what I'm saying? Cause I feel like my road is private.
Oh, yeah.
I don't go by Beach Street where you live. Uh, but we, you can check, see if there's any obligations or part of the town.
GIS marks those streets. And if you get on GIS, it'll, it'll tell you.
Is there any more discussion on street slash sidewalk repair? If not, go to just another campsite update.
Wait, sidewalk repair. That thing's been tore up for how many years now? The sidewalk, right, going toward the...
So I guess that'd be part of the grant. Have you checked into getting the grants for the sidewalks?
That's a VDOT issue there.
Yeah, I'm working on a plonger of applications through ready, so they go through VDOT.
Okay.
Um, they didn't open up their grant portal until the spring, so I'm currently working on that.
And that's like, we pay like twenty percent, and then they pay the eighty, correct? So that's a great deal.
We have to do a twenty percent match.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that would be a great deal to get that, so. Keep pursuing it, cause I think these sidewalks are a very useful thing in our town that's just a light to look at, so, that's, that's good. We'll put that on the agenda next, uh, and see where you're at with that.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go to item number twenty, which is budget and tax rates. Can I ask you a public hearing about that for, for long?
Yeah, but we'll need a public hearing for next month, sorry, May. Yeah, so that we can vote on it by June, to have it adopted by law.
Okay.
Because that's one of those rare areas of the code that we actually have to have a public comment. I think it's seven days before the vote. So we have next month with the public comment and the vote.
This is the final proposed budget?
So we're still, Dolores Smith has been working with us on fixing some old bank grits that had not been done. So as we complete those, um, for the audit, the numbers keep changing on this. This is the most up-to-date version that I have. And it's pretty, it, it's pretty close, but numbers are still changing because of those bank grits. Every time we get one completed, it changes a little bit. Also in this, there's a little bit of grant money that is not listed on here.
I would suggest a budget workshop for... April thirtieth. And then we nail everything down at that point. Yeah, thirty, what, like that, uh, it's a Wednesday.
See, I can't.
It's a Wednesday.
About twenty-nine.
Is that when we have the Heritage Days meeting written?
No, the twenty-eighth is Heritage Days.
We could do it the sixth, I'll be back for the sixth already, B, B here for that.
Let's make it the sixth then.
Go ahead.
We'll be included in that.
Tuesday, May six? May sixth? I think there's... Yes, we just discussed something.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, May the seventh is the, uh, final bad building.
Seven, that's a Wednesday.
So.
May the sixth is the budget workshop.
What time?
Sixth.
That's fine, because I, I've worked, so. Six thirty. Um, May the sixth, is that what you said?
Do we have a motion?
So we need one.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, does anyone oppose? And the motion passes.
And while we're on the subject, I just wanted to point out, um, under the Virginia Code for the notice that we have to give to the public for the budget and for the tax rates, it has to be given seven days prior to a vote on the budget. So rather than having two meetings and having a public hearing and seven days later having a vote, you know, before July, I would propose the council to do a public notice for May.
I would make the motion that we have the, um, public hearing on May twenty. May twentieth at our regular meeting prior to the regular meeting at six thirty.
And the important thing about that is, is that's gonna have to include, I believe by the code, a summary, summary of the total revenues and expenditures and the current and proposed real estate personal property tax levy, so.
And we have to have that how many days prior?
Seven days, so, I mean, we'll need that, we'll need that, yeah, in the May meeting, and then so we can vote on that in June. But that basically poses a May twentieth deadline on the proposed vote.
Yeah, so as long as we get that in by the ninth, or for the ninth frame.
Actually, yeah, let me, let me pull it up here and make sure I give you all the right deadline, because, you know, we need to have it in by the Friday before that meeting, so.
Sixteenth or ninth?
The ninth, uh, because it will need to run, well, actually, because typically we do...
Ninth.
No, we want it to run by the thirteenth, I think, preferably. We need to have a public, uh, notice that that's gonna be.
By the thirteenth, so if we got it in on the ninth, we would still be within our con period.
Yeah.
But we should have it by the evening at six.
So that's, that's really the deadline I would propose. You all, that would be the deadline, or the, you know, the May sixth, so.
May sixth, okay.
So we'll workshop on the sixth and hearing on the ninth.
I have a theory, okay, no.
Okay. Is there any more discussion on budget and tax rates?
She made a motion, I said, maybe, she's gonna vote on that.
We did not oppose, um...
So we don't need your vote to have a public hearing?
Oh, the public hearing.
Yeah, that's what's proposed, I'm sorry, I was reading.
Oh, sorry, sorry, that's good. Is there any objection having the public hearing at the next council meeting? No objection, and it passes.
Do we need a vote on that?
I would do a roll call vote, just because that's.
Suggested.
It's the best practice.
Okay, suggested by the attorney, have a roll call vote?
Before we go there, are we leaving the tax rates as is?
For the workshop.
And that's what needs to be decided by the deadline, so the proposed rates that go in the paper are actually what you vote on and change and stuff.
But can we, we can't take action at a workshop, so to set a new tax rate.
Right, so the, the tax rates will be set at the June meeting after the May public hearing, where the co- the public was, had a opportunity to comment on the proposed rates. But that means you all would have to settle at the bur- at the budget workshop on the proposed rates. They wouldn't be adopted at that point. But you would definitely need to have some agreement, otherwise it messes up our schedule and our timing.
That was why I was.
You do not wanna not have a budget, actually, by July first.
Yeah, so we have kind of agreement on the workshop, at the workshop.
Yeah.
Okay.
And just, and just to clarify, there can be multiple proposed, I think, you know, if there's, if there's, if you can't come to consensus on a proposal, it would increase your costs with the paper, because it's the longer publication, you know, theoretically, you could do it.
The best would be if the manager had a budget, we just walked in and said, this is perfect, have fifteen minute meeting, hope that'll happen, but.
Exactly.
To have something that we could pass on to the public, you know, by the public hearing, if it's good, we can adjust it.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote on the motion, just to have the public hearing next month?
Call for it.
Yes.
Paul.
Yeah.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melon.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is real estate taxes. Um, we kinda just covered some of that. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, what that's really about is trying to get the first half of the real estate taxes out. Um, so what we, when we called the Commissioner of Revenue's office, he indicated that the land book would not be ready until towards the end of this month, if they were able to get it ready by then. On the real estate taxes, I would make the motion that, assuming we have the land book in time and, um, Southern Software can do the conversion, that we do the same thing we did last year and have the first half due by June thirtieth.
Do we have a second to that motion?
A second.
Any discussion?
I would like to amend the motion to clarify that there'll be at least a thirty-day opportunity for the people to pay the taxes. Which means if they don't get the land book done by May thirtieth, then we'd have to put off the due date for the taxes, at least thirty days out from when the notice is just sent out. So my amendment would be, there has to be at least thirty days from when the tax tickets are sent out before the tax tickets are issued.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I would say.
Okay. Can we have a...
Because that was something that happened last time, there was some confusion, like fifteen days you gotta get in.
State code indicates two weeks.
Well, I mean, we can do better than that.
I, I do understand where it's feasible, we always do. And, you know, my motion originally was per the assumption that they have the land book ready and we can get it out and make it due on that date, that we make every effort to do.
My amendment says we wait at least thirty days before we make it there.
I do understand.
Any more discussion on the amendment to the motion? Can we have a roll call vote to the amended motion?
Call, call for it.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
I'm gonna say no, but I'm saying no because I have another suggestion.
Moles.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
And amended motion passes. Is there any more discussion on real estate taxes? Okay, with none, we'll go to item twenty-two A, which is Central High School Girls Basketball Team, uh, twenty-twenty-five state champion. What I...
I'm gonna try to get ahold of Dotson, their coach, and see if any can come at the next meeting.
Okay.
And hopefully we can, or can be able to give them a certificate or, what did we give them last time, a plaque? In recognition of their station. Yeah. Okay, is that okay? I mean, I'll get ahold of him and see if they can come next meeting and bring the quality of girls. I know last time, there were so many having other things, softball, tennis, all that. So I would make the motion that we present, you know, the plaque at the next council meeting.
If we get them in first, so they wouldn't wanna hang around for this.
Yeah, right. We usually get them first, yes.
Yes, okay.
And then we'll issue a plaque to them.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion on this motion?
Why should we get the flag and crowd over a flag?
Wait, what, what did you say?
Let me put the flag in, and that way it won't bother you.
Let's just leave it alone, like we have, I mean, I would want to get the flag.
That was last night.
I always got them a flag. I don't understand the problem with getting a flag.
Do we have?
I'm not against the flag. I said, why have all this and really need to have this much discussion over the flag? You just take our issues.
Whatever.
We're on, we are on this item, so any more discussion on this item of the agenda? Can we have, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Call for it.
Yes.
Paul.
Yeah.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Melon.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Um, twenty-two B, is that who you?
Weldon.
Weldon Cooper, okay.
Right. So you all should have a copy of the resolution. Uh, the comprehensive study by Weldon Cooper Center. Yes, yeah. Do you wanna read them?
Okay. We have a suggestion to read this to the public and the council. Resolution of the Town of Pound, Town Council, requesting a comprehensive study by the Weldon Cooper Center in Virginia Tech's Center for Economic and Community Engagement to assess the impact of Medicaid cuts on the Town of Pound. Whereas Congressman Morgan Griffith recently voted in favor of federal budget legislation that included eight hundred and eighty billion in Medicaid cuts, with an estimated two point four billion of those cuts impacting South Virginia. And whereas Medicaid is a vital source of healthcare funding, funding for the citizens of Pound and plays a significant role in supporting local hospitals, independent pharmacies, nursing homes, home healthcare providers, and other healthcare services that serve our most vulnerable populations, including children, seniors, and individuals with disabilities. And whereas, healthcare providers are among the largest employers in Pound, and any significant reduction in Medicaid funding will undoubtedly result in job losses within the healthcare sector, threatening the economic stability of the region. And whereas, healthcare careers such as doctors, registered nurses, certified nursing assistants, pharmacies, pharmacists, and other medical professions are vital pathways for Pound's student, students seeking stable, well-paying careers. And whereas, without reliable healthcare industry job opportunities in Pound, future healthcare professionals may be forced to relocate outside the town and resign to secure employment. And whereas, Pound's financial stability is closely tied to the health of our local economy. And reductions in Medicaid funding could have a severe fiscal impact on the town budget and other essential services. And whereas, the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service and Virginia Tech's Center for Economic and Community Engagement have a proven track record providing accurate, nonpartisan economic analysis and are well-equipped to assess the short-term and long-term effects of these Medicaid cuts. Now therefore, it is, be it resolved, that Pound, Virginia Council hereby requests that the Weldon Cooper Center and Virginia Tech's Center for Economic and Community Engagement conduct a comprehensive study analyzing the potential impact Medicaid cuts on healthcare senior job losses in Pound. Sorry, excuse me, healthcare sector job losses in Pound and surrounding southwest Virginia localities. An anticipated fiscal impact on the Pound town budget. The potential economic ripple effect on local business and service providers that depend on healthcare revenue. And the effect these cuts may have on future career opportunities for local students pursuing healthcare-related options, professions. Be it further resolved, that the Pound Town Council directs the town manager to forward copies of this resolution to the Lino, L E N O.
Linois.
Linoisco Planning District Commission, P D C, the Pound Industrial Development Authority, I D A, Senior Senator Tim Kane, Senator Mark Warner, Virginia's General Assembly Leadership, local healthcare providers, educational institutions, and community stakeholders. Be it finally resolved, that this resolution be spread upon the minutes this meeting, and that the Pound officials actively engage with the Weldon Cooper Center, Virginia Tech, to ensure that the study findings are presented in the Town Council and the public as soon as feasible feasible. And then it has adopted on, uh, such-and-such day, twenty-five, by Pound Town Council. And then it has, it'd have to be signed by the mayor and the clerk.
So I'm making the motion that we approve this resolution?
I said, just a friendly amendment would be Pound Economic Development Authority instead of Industrial Development Authority. And also, I'd like to add Congressman Morgan Griffiths, one of the people who received this.
Absolutely.
Sure. So do we have a second to the amendment to the motion, for the friendly amendment to the motion?
I can second the amendment.
Okay. Okay, we have a, any more discussion?
What, what legislation is it that you're referring to that Morgan Griff voted for?
With regard to the Medicaid, Medicaid cuts.
Maybe what, what, what's it?
Off the top of my head, I can't remember the specific legislation. There's so many codes right now. I mean, you look at our drainets, or set myself the names.
In light of the fact that we don't know what legislation Morgan Griff voted for that we're against, I would make a friendly amendment to just take out the first whereas. Leave all the other whereas, but take it first.
I'm okay with that.
So do we have a second to the most recent friendly amendment?
Well, you need.
She'll need a second?
So we take it the first whereas, change Economic Development Authority and Morgan Griffiths.
Did the clerk get all that?
I think, go ahead, tell me again.
Okay, we're taking out the first whereas, we're adding Congressman Morgan Griffiths to the...
Hold on.
Okay, you're good. We are adding Congressman Morgan Griffiths to the list of people who received this, uh, resolution. And we are changing, wait a minute, Pound Industrial Development Authority to the Pound Economic Development Authority.
Which would be E D A.
Which would be the E D A.
Might as well, if you're gonna be forwarding this people, might as well send one to, uh, Delegate Killmore and Senator Pitt. Oh, we're at it. Is that okay?
I don't care.
What did you have, Call for it?
Uh, Delegate Killmore, we'll send a copy to him, and also Senator Pitt. I think this is a free study, right? So I, I would send it along for the free study.
You said Killian?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote on the amendments to pass this resolution, to the motion to pass this resolution?
Call for it.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Hammy.
Yes.
Melon.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay. The next item is limited access. Brendan, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay, we have another resolution that is... Okay, we have another resolution that is, I'm asked to read. The resolution to change limited access control on U.S. Highway twenty-three in Pound, Virginia. Whereas the Town of Pound, Virginia recognizes that a number of residents currently rely on a single-lane gravel driveway and a wooden bridge to access their properties located on Water Plant Road from U.S. Highway twenty-three due to limited access restrictions. And whereas the existing access route, Water Plant Road, is steep, narrow, and hazardous, posing significant safety risks to residents, visitors, and emergency response vehicles. And whereas the wooden bridge providing access has suffered substantial structural damage due to repeating flooding, creating further dangers, and rendering it increasingly unreliable for safe passage. And whereas the condition of the existing roadway and bridge has worsened over time, making access to properties increasingly difficult and unsafe, particularly during adverse weather conditions. And whereas changing the limited access control on U.S. Highway twenty-three in this area would allow for the construction of a safe, properly engineered access point to improve ingress and egress for residents and emergency services. And whereas the Town of Pound seeks assistance from local, state, and federal authorities, including but not limited to the, to the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, Wise County officials, and other relevant agencies to support the, and facilitate the change in limited access control and enable the development of a new, properly-created and stabilized access road with a structurally sound bridge or culvert system where necessary. And now therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Pound formally request that the appropriate governmental authorities take all necess- necessary actions to change the limited access control on U.S. Highway twenty-three at the specific specified location and to conduct feasibly feasibility and engineering assessments for the development of a safe and reliable access point. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be submitted to the Virginia Department of Transportation, VDOT, the Wise County Board of Supervisors, and other relevant agencies for immediate consideration and action. Then has we can sign this.
So this resolution is brought about by Maggie Mullins?
Mm-hmm.
Who owns a home in that area and has increasing difficulty trying to-
Get the property.
Yeah, get the property because of the deterioration of that bridge. And they're asking that the limited access be removed for them to be able to make an entrance there at his property. Eventually, we will have a resolution asking to remove all limited access on Highway twenty-three, which is part of the comprehensive plan and has been for quite some time. We don't think anybody has acted on it. So with this being the case, I would make the motion that we adopt this resolution.
This is the first I've seen of this resolution. And so I would like to table it till next month. Maybe there can be a presentation of exactly where this will take place before we pass the resolution. So I make the motion we table this till next month and get some further information.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Yeah.
Any discussion on the motion? To table it till next month. Okay, can we have a roll call vote for that please?
Cofford?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Kennedy?
No.
Mullins?
No.
Powers?
Yes.
And we will table that till next month? The next item on the agenda is other business, right? Or is it?
I want to make the motion that we have a public hearing. I assume we have everything necessary to have a public hearing on the boundary adjustment. Is that correct?
Yes.
Have a public hearing on the boundary adjustment. I guess we're having the budget public hearing next month, so June, at the June meeting. Third Tuesday in June.
So you want the public hearing in June, so?
Yes, for the boundary adjustment for the two school projects.
Okay. Do we have, that's in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
June seventeen.
That's the June meeting. Do we have a second to that motion? Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on that motion?
Just something we've been kicking around for a while, let's just go for it. Especially if we're going to be putting in disco and refurbished cricket ball or what do you call it?
Pickleball.
Pickleball, yeah. Pickleball courts up there, I'd like to see it the inside of town, it's a little developed property.
Is there any more discussion? Can we have a roll call vote please?
Cofford?
Yes.
Hall? Kennedy?
Sure.
Mullins?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Any other business? Do we have a public comment next, what did we schedule that as?
I believe we did the public comment first, right?
Yes.
I had, that's what I had.
We have another public comment. If members from the audience like to get up and address the council. Please state your name and whether you live in or out of the town.
I'm Batley Williams, I'm a landowner. Um, excuse my voice. But, Mr. Powers and all the Town Council, I would welcome you to come up there and look at what we're talking about. You need to see firsthand of what we're dealing with. I would also encourage Mr. Dotson, we would welcome you, just come up there and Matt and I will take you through it all. Now let me give you a little history about this land. This land was bought by Jim Robbins. He cut the throats of about three hundred Pound residents and bought this land out of money then. The land was supposed to went back to the landowners after the railroad came through. But he removed the fence, he removed the ties, he removed the steel because he's part-owner and Robin had steel and mixed up gas. He removed it all. But these little landowners, one great thing though, we did not find him because they thought the railroad was taken over in York. So he removed the fence, and yes, it may have been for cattle, but what we are asking for is protection of our property. These people had come through that trail off this campsite, they can wander on our property, destroying our property, setting a camp on our property. So we are asking for the fence for protection from them coming off this trail onto our property. So Debbie can claim all she wants to claim. She knows about the fence, she admitted in public that she knew the fences and that she was supposed to be there. She didn't, but she failed to tell you that Mr. Robbins and that's Jamie Cox's dad removed that fence. So, and the reason why behind that, because they made millions off of those poor landowners. They locked the land. And so, and this is not hearsay, you can look up his history, he is part-owner of the, and Robin had steel. This, this railroad goes all the way through Pound, all the way through O'Mill Village. This fence is supposed to go all the way through the railroad to protect the landowners. Now she has dedicated, a deed of dedication to you all, which puts, conveys the responsibility to you all. If not, Jamie Cox would have put that fence back up. So, Mr. Dotson, I would welcome you to, if you want to come up, any of you all want to come up, we'll give you a grand tour, you need to see it, see it firsthand. Not only that trail from the campsite, it's going through wetlands, those protected rights to wetlands in Virginia. And you probably know it, Mr. Dotson. Every bit of that soaking wet, the cut through that goes through our property, water is coming out of the mountains, it's caving in, it used to be forty-foot wide, it's about eight-foot wide because the shale rock keeps falling, that's the cut through. And before you get to that, in that campground, there is live habitats going on in the wetlands. And there have been, and it's probably Debbie's posse, has been going four-wheeling through there. And there's frog eggs, there's live habitat. So I want y'all to know, you need to see firsthand what we're talking, while we're asking.
I thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Linda, what days are you there? What days during the week do you typically?
Saturday.
Oh, I'm retired.
You're retired? Let's see, let's see, you want to try to, you want to hike?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've been there, it's, I can testify that some of the shale is falling yet.
Okay, so let's see. Graduation that night. I would, it's important, May the first. Go for a hike, May the first.
What's that day?
Uh, that's Thursday, is that a good day for you?
In the afternoon.
Okay, let's try, uh, three o'clock, May the first. Would that work for you for Mr. Powers and how to come?
May the first?
At three o'clock. And you go to that little parking area, you like to go to the tunnel, is that where you park?
Yeah, and then you walk left.
You can tell you more about it, you can probably, you can tell you more, but there's no really parking spot. You're parked beside the road, the, the mountain road. Parked on the right side of the road, there's no parking spot.
Anybody that wants to join us, anybody would welcome to join us, May the first, Thursday. Pay your taxes. Pay the taxes. So. Three P.M., well, May the first.
Okay, please state your name.
My name is Rob Reeves, just Tennessee. I'm probably up Stacy's pantry. The thing about the campground, you keep mentioning coming from the hunt club side. Well, I can bring you guys articles on Debbie's opinion, her intentions, where to come in from the quick shop side, put a parking lot in there, come in from the quick shop side to get to the campsite. Another article, it's going to be going from the campsite, walking down to this trail. Now, this way right here, this through the property. And, and she had mentioned earlier about the logging, illegal logging that's destroyed the railroad there and stuff like that. In my day, I am allowed to go from one side of my property to the other side of my property with my buggies or whatever, hell, it was broke back in the day, okay? But I can go from one side of my property to the other side, and if I want to log it, if I want to strip it completely down, I can strip it. But she's calling illegal logging and destroying the railroad property. All the market, all the concrete market is still there. There's maybe one or two small sections of fence there. Now, I can't speak for Jerry Bentley, but Jerry Bentley's had a lot of problems out of trash and stuff like that. And it was mentioned by Mr. Kennedy earlier that people go up there and camp anyway so she don't really see the problem. The problem is-
That's not what I say.
Uh, this is his time, excuse me.
Yes, the, the, the problem is, um, I've got trespassers coming through there, coming to each property. They were used to quick shop side, okay? I haven't caught anybody yet coming out of the other side because the trees have finally filled in. Okay, over, over top of it. I pick up trash every time I go up there. But I love going up there, I love walking around up there on my property, you know, because that's my little sanctuary. But when you go up there and you run into people coming, coming down through there saying it's a Red Fox Trail on a side by side, now this happened two years ago, some guys was coming down through there and they said they were clearing the, clearing the property for the, uh, Red Fox Trail. Red Fox Trail is back near, before you get to the hunt. You got to go up the round bits of Red Fox Trail, and here they are possibly another mile down to here, down the open road there. On a side by side, cutting trees and stuff. It wasn't that little twelve-foot right away, these people were cutting forty, fifty, sixty feet off the right of it. I can take you up there, if we walk this, we can either come in from the quick shop side or we can come in from the hunt club side. Or walk the whole thing, maybe leave one or two vehicles here to take everybody back up to the corner of town. I, I'd love for you guys to actually come up there and walk this and look at this, to see what we're talking about. My son, he's about to, uh, put a home up there at the very end of it, because it's, it's actually looking gorgeous. But when you're going to have campers, all the less, unless they're about fifteen hundred feet from you, they're going to come and explore. And you can't say you won't.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
With the next, would anyone else from the audience like to get up and address the council?
I don't want to get up there, but I want to ask the question, when you put pickleball courts-
Can you please state your name?
Share your, Tyler Drive. Are you going to have rest facilities? If you're going to, if you're having pickleball courts to do tournaments and stuff? Are you going to have bathrooms and places to wash your hands and that kind of stuff?
I mean, that's definitely something we can look at. The money that came through the, the county was just to revamp the tennis courts that are-
Or what we did that day with you, if you don't have facilities where people want to go there and do it.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else from the audience like to give a, give a public comment?
At the present, there's no plans to make it park. There's just a plan to put the pickleball and the golf.
Just go up there, yeah, it just, I mean, a good recreational activity for anyone wanting to go up there and use that.
That may be something to think about developing in the future.
Please state your name, whether you live in or out of the town.
Stacy Carson, Blake Springs. Um, first I want to get, I want to set the record straight. I keep hearing drama, drama, drama. I don't believe that it's drama when you are trying to get transparency and accountability for issues and actions that have been taken here in the Town of Pound. And my heart is still here. I was run out of this town. And it's a long story, but it has to do with a lot of individuals that are still employed and right here on council. But I would like to go ahead and, um, say, Brittany, I thank you very much for handling the Department of Treasury, uh, problem. But can you, uh, address it now? Was my name ever mentioned or was I ever, while I was mayor in this town, did it have anything to do with me whatsoever?
Brittany, you don't, you don't have to address the-
Well, I'm, I'm asking because I want to be transparent and accountable.
And public comment is really for just you to state what you noticed that you-
Well, I will say, if, if it did, I would like to know because Lieber Kennedy at the last meeting did insinuate and actually slandered me by saying that I had something to do with it. So I need the record straight, and I want the public and the Town of Pound to know who's right and who's wrong. Because I can guarantee I have nothing to do with that. Cliff and Cofford, again, you probably can't answer, but yes or no, did you have anything to do with me starting to come back to these meetings?
No.
I just think we've talked more than two or three times, Maggie. Yeah, well, I just wanted to make sure I'm setting the record straight, you know, like I said, drama, drama. Gary Hall, I still feel so bad from the very first meeting when Lieber Kennedy called you out in drama and claimed and was combative with you because she knew personal business from police officers that they had been to your house.
Yeah.
Oh, but that's not drama, is it? No, but of course, we're just setting the record straight right now. So on, uh, issues that are also very concerning, and I will publicly announce this, that while I was mayor and Lieber Kennedy was first elected to this council, Lieber Kennedy has said now several times that she does not partake in that marijuana. But yet as mayor, before meetings, she often wanted me to take some and would actually bully me and peer pressure me into-
You better shut this down or I-
Yes, into calming my tiny down, only she said it very vulgar. And my son was even present and remembers-
We thank you for your time. Your time is now extended.
Thank you.
Would anyone else from the audience like to come up and give a, please state your name, whether you live in or out of the town?
Jacob Kiefer, Alton Town Women. I find it very funny that they are so obsessed with Lieber and her business, yet they can't take control of their own business. She was not run out of town, she caused herself to leave the town and the government. Let's set that record straight.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else like to get up and give a public comment? Would anyone else like to get up and give a public comment?
I may seem a bit old, but I was in Kentwood. I have my home over here in town, not in corporation, but I do have a house over here. And I won't think, since we're statements, but everything's straight, you should not be threatened when you come to account to me. And the last time when I was here, I was threatened, and I was told, you better back And people think that I'm ashamed of my daughter. My daughter works up here till 11 o'clock, but not sometimes. Lieber is my daughter. They said I was afraid to tell, but she was my daughter. No, I am not. I'm very proud of what she's done for the town. And I know she's not done it by herself. She had help doing it. So I am tired of hearing her cook down. So I think it's time to put a stop to that. And if you can't put a stop to it, give it to the lady man.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else from the audience like to get up and give a comment?
Connor Jane Blake Spring, I'm not one to talk about any of that stuff. I specifically wanted to talk about the recording equipment. I used to run that stuff for the town on digital livestream, that off of a blue screen laptop. And that camera used to work just fine to record and livestream, and I post it right to the Town of Pound Facebook page for people to be able to access. And I'm also confused on why we had to specifically state that the equipment had to not be used for live streaming. Whenever, no matter what, you'll still be getting the same equipment, it's just the matter on which it's run. I really don't think that we truly need to spend $500 on new equipment, because that camera used to work just fine. And as long as the microphones and the speakers are working great, then the old, like, square microphone that used to be used with that computer should work great for it. I was just wanting to say that so that the town wouldn't have any more expenditures. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Would anyone else from the audience like to stand up and address the council, the mayor? Will we go to the final item of the agenda, on the agenda? And that is to go into closed session. Do we have a motion to go into closed session for discussion of acquisition of real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating strategy of the town? Do we have a motion?
Under 2.2-371183, I have my motion.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
One second.
Can we have a second? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Cawthorn.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Do we make the motion to go back into open session? Okay? Do we have a second to that motion?
One second.
Okay, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Cawthorn.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yeah.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to certify that...
Basically, a motion to certify that only matters lawfully exempt from open session or discuss, namely, the acquisition of real estate or the marketing position would be compromised, the town's position. I'm not that motion, just like you said. It's over 2.37118.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
One second.
Okay. Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Cawthorn.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Do we have unanimous consent to add the item to the agenda of discussion?
Yes.
An item to the agenda. Do we need a roll call vote for that?
Just need to make the motion to...
Make the motion to add the acquisition of the property adjacent to the People's Bank of Pound building to the agenda.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Cawthorn.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
Okay.
And I would make the motion to acquire the property adjacent to the People's Bank of Pound, former building, otherwise known as the Jaquita and Derrick Ratliff property, for the, do I need to put the price up there? For the amount of $43,500 as our last best and final offer.
Any acceptance from the council?
Any acceptance from the council, that's my motion.
Okay. Can we, do we have a second to that motion?
One second.
Okay, do we have a second? Any discussion?
I appreciate Councilwoman Kennedy coming up with the funding for this acquisition. Although I don't feel comfortable voting on it tonight, I do appreciate that, that you have the funding for it.
Yeah. Any more discussion? Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Cawthorn.
Abstain.
Paul.
Need to say.
Kennedy.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
The motion passes. The last item on the agenda is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Can we have a second? Can we have a roll call vote of that, please?
Cawthorn.
Yes.
Paul. Kennedy.
Yep.
Mullins.
Yes.
Powers.
Yes.
The meeting is now out of session.